All right, it's nine o'clock. I'll call to order the December 27th meeting of the Saline County Commission. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick. Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Weis.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Yes ma'am.
I don't know where the back feed's coming from. All right.
Is he here?
Stand by one minute we go. Test, test. There you go. Thank you Lauren.
Commissioner Shadwick, are you here?
Yes.
Thank you.
I will now stand for flag salute in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now time for our citizens' input. If there's anyone who would like to address the commission, come forward, state your name. Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda consists of approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable, approval of public forum agenda, approval of the smart communications contract, approval of a cereal malt beverage license renewal, and approval of the county commission meeting minutes of December 20th. Any item here that the commission would like to address?
I'd like to ask the question on the cereal malt beverage. That is for Saline County Livestock Expo Center?
That's correct. It's a renewal.
And how does that work? Others, then we can sublease that license when someone else comes in and wants to sell beer? How does it work?
You're getting a little bit above my expertise Commissioner, but my understanding is that we have to hold the license for events that occur at the Expo Center, but if this is basically, I think, for Expo sponsored events, because if people bring in, hold an event, they have to get a special event permit. So this is not this is not like if somebody throws a an event there, this license does not cover them. This is for things like the county fair that are ongoing that we essentially sponsor.
So in other words, and I'll just pick on the Equafest, I'm not picking on them, but they're the biggest ones coming up. If they decided that they wanted to have a beer garden?
They would have to get a special event.
They would have to get the license and it would not be our license.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Did I get that right Hannah? I think so. David's tried to explain it to me a couple of times and that's the best I can.
Well, I'll have to have him explain it to me too then. That having been said, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second motion. It's been moved and seconded, we approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries five zero. Moving to our action items. Item number one.
Dera Grant Award with Darren Fishel, Road and Bridge Administrator.
Good morning Darren.
Good morning Commissioners. This is the Dera Grant Award. I came and had an informational item a month or so ago with you folks and KDHC has awarded the grant application submitted by Saline County for 25% reimbursement of the replacement cost of a tractor. This is funded by DERA, the Diesel Emissions Reduction Act Grant. On October 25th, 2016, the United States District Court for the District of Northern California approved a settlement with Volkswagen addressing the 2.0 liter diesel engine. This action was taken to partially settle allegations by the EPA in California that Volkswagen used illegal defeat devices on model year 2019 through 2015 diesel vehicles to evade emission tests resulting in an exceedance of tailpipe emissions for nitrogen oxides. The settlement requires Volkswagen to establish an environmental mitigation trust for states, including tribes, DC, and Puerto Rico, to implement projects that reduce NOx emissions. In addition, a second partial consent decree was approved in December of 2016 dealing with the 3.0 liter diesels. The state of Kansas will receive $15.6 million over the next 10 years for projects that reduce NOx emissions. The Kansas Department of Health and Environment is the lead agency to act on behalf of the trust for the state of Kansas. Saline County has been following this action very closely for any funding opportunities. In 2020, Saline County received $51,296.75 towards the replacement of a track excavator. In October of 2022, Saline County applied for and received grant funding through the purchase of a new tractor up to an amount not to exceed $30,113.66. The Road and Bridge Department would request the commission to accept the grant to purchase a T6-145 New Holland tractor from Canacquick, Womigo, Kansas in the amount of $120,454.39. This is a source well cloaked through state contract bidding. The tractor is in stock. The alternatives for action would be to accept the KDHC grant and purchase from Canacquick, two, reject the grant and purchase from Canacquick. Staff recommends accepting the grant from KDHC and purchase the tractor from Canacquick. The tractor replacement is in our EIP, our Equipment Improvement Program. The tractor we currently use is a 2003 case with 9,000 hours. It is near the end of its service life and in need of repairs. We have rented New Holland tractors from Canacquick for many years for the roadside mowing program and have found them to be a dependable piece of equipment with readily available surface locally. The budget impact was currently the O2O Special Road and Bridge Machinery Account has an unencumbered balance of $1,891,201.79. The purchase of the tractor, $120,454.39, would leave a balance of $1,770,747.40. Upon reimbursement from DERA, an amount not to exceed $30,113.60, will be deposited back into the Special Road and Bridge Machinery Account, leaving a balance of $1,861,000. The prudent reserve for the account is $1 million. Excuse me.
Okay, one question.
Sure.
This piece of equipment that it's replacing, we have to destroy that, correct?
Correct.
But then we sell the scrap?
We do, and that's why the amount is not to exceed that much, because they will deduct the amount that we receive for the scrap from that price and we'll also put that money into the special equipment account.
Okay, and one other question. You mentioned approval reserve and then you told us what our balance is. Do we have any projected expenses on the EIP this coming year?
A portion of the motor grader that we purchased will come out of the accounts, the Road and Bridge Special Machinery Account, and that shouldn't exceed $150,000.
Quick question here. Does this tractor come with a loader on it?
No, it has a three-point hitch, but it does not have a front loader.
Doesn't have a front loader. Do you know which, I did a little check into it, I mean they have a couple different horsepowers of this tractor. Do you know which horsepower this tractor has?
This would be the 120 to 130 horsepower tractor.
Okay.
So essentially Darren, we're going to pay $90,000 for this tractor. Is that
That's correct.
Pretty close to round numbers?
Okay.
And its main use?
This tractor here is used for, actually it will serve three purposes. It will be used to mow as a spare backup for when we need one, and it also pulls our roam disc and sheep's foot roller.
More questions? Questions or comments from the public?
I just, quickly, I just, one more question. I mean, and I know that the New Holland don't have any issues, but did we, have we went out and checked other same horsepower tractors and went out for bids at all?
We did. We checked a Source Con tractor with John Deere, and their machine was a little cheaper. But that machine, they do not, they don't, there's no John Deere dealer in Salina. And Canacquick, we get very good service from Canacquick, because we rent from them and have a very good working relationship with them.
Curiosity is going to kill the cat here then.
Okay, I understand.
How much cheaper was the John Deere?
I believe 122,000. And I, we did that because
So that wouldn't be cheaper then. That'd be more expensive.
Because this is 120.
120.
I apologize, and it was, it was a little cheaper, maybe 110, 112.
Probably information we should have in the future Darren, when those
When you say the New Holland has a local, does Canacquick here service that?
Yes.
Okay, because I know they don't sell them here.
Canacquick Purchase Case IH.
Right, but, because I have a New Holland, that's the reason why I was just asking. Okay.
There you go, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
But going through that state purchasing, we're well within that's well within our rights to go there and let the state find the best pricing and entities can buy off of that.
The KDHC required me to get two quotes. The reason I went or am recommending the New Holland is one, it is in stock. The one from John Deere would have to be ordered, and we get good service from Canacquick.
Well, when you mentioned KDHC, is that who the grant is sourced through?
Yes, they administering the grant, yes. And they are perfectly acceptable with us using the New Holland also. I had to send them both grants, and then they said we don't necessarily take the lowest priced one. We take the one that you recommend.
Any more questions?
Mr. Chair, I move we accept Dera Grant Purchase Tractor from Canacquick.
Second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept SS3 Purchase Agreement 2022-65. Nope. I'm sorry.
Sixty-five.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
The one above.
It's been, it's been moved and seconded, we approve DERA Grant Award 2022-64. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries five zero. Sorry about that. We'll move on to item number two, which I'm so
SS3 Purchase Agreement 2022-65, Darren Fishel, Road and Bridge Administrator.
This is, request is for a road aggregate SS3. Jesse Knight with Knight Trucking has offered for sale to Saline County an SS3 type material for purchase. We have purchased this material in the past for $33 a ton. Mr. Knight has offered to sell this material for $29 per ton delivered in a quantity not to exceed 7,000 ton. Alternatives for action would be to accept the offer from Knight Trucking to purchase the material for $29 per ton delivered. Two is reject the purchase of the material. Staff recommends purchasing the material in amounts that meets the department's needs not to exceed 7,000 ton. This material is of a smaller size aggregate than the SS5. It has a hardness factor that is greater than the current SS3 that can be purchased from the Ham Quarry in Woodbine. The material is used in select locations where residential traffic is greater than rural traffic. It creates less dust and is easier on the tires. The budget impact is the purchases would be made from the 2023 line item SS or road gravel SS5, and it has a balance of $413,875.
Questions of the commission?
Have we not already purchased SS5 and 3? We just approved that not very long ago.
Those were the bid amounts. This came after the bid amounts were awarded. Mr. Knight called me and said he had this material for sale and would like to sell it to us at a discounted price. It is $2.70 higher delivered than the SS3 from Woodbine. But the material is a little bit harder. It's an aggregate we use to rebuild the roads up in Frisbee Way and then over in Sundowner West where the traffic is more residential than rural. It also provides another tool for the rural operators to use. I believe if we can, you know, it's a little bit of a learning curve to teach them. And the SS3 from Woodbine, this department used that material for decades and I would say it is less than adequate for our needs. You know, typically, it is a softer material. It grinds, the tire wear grinds it down to dust and then it leaves the roads muddy. But with the SS5, we've been trying to get the base, and then if we can supplement it with the SS3 on a surface material and some sand, hopefully it can, we can ease some of the wear for the folks' tires.
Okay, but my concern is, is that we've already placed purchase orders for this material through Ham? Or these other people that bid on it? We've already
Approved the purchase, yes.
Approved the purchase, all that. So do we, if we buy this, then do we just leave them hanging with that material? Not being able to be sold to us?
We will still purchase those materials, which is the SS5 from Ham, and also the sand from Johnson. Those materials will still be purchased also.
Okay, was there, I mean, I'm just asking, was there any SS3 on those?
The SS, there was an SS3 from the Harshman Quarry through Melbourne Hall by Knight, and their price for that was $36 a ton.
Okay, but we've already issued those right to buy or purchase orders to those?
I don't believe that they accepted the price of 30, it was either $33 or $36 a ton from the Melbourne Quarry. This is material that he has on hand he would like to get rid of, so he's just offering it to us at a discounted price.
So this, this 7,000 ton is in excess of what we're already planning?
It would be in combination with, you know, when we, our materials we use as need, we order. We don't always say, okay, we're going to take this amount, we're going to take this amount. We say up to an amount, and then we order according to our needs. This year, our needs weren't that great. So there is quite a few dollars left in the aggregate line items. And so we don't ever just purchase a set amount of any one thing. But we always guarantee so much, you know, we'll always purchase so much that we know we'll use. Typically, we use about 40,000 ton of aggregate a year. Last year, I believe that was about 23 or 25.
Your things, your request for action here says it's an SS3 type of material. So it, does it not have a designation then?
It does. It meets the SS3 K.DOT spec. That's probably a wording of me. I did request the gradations from Mr. Knight, and he did provide that and it's the K.DOT spec for SS3.
And it also goes on to say that it has a hardness factor that is greater than the current SS3?
If we were to purchase the SS3 from Woodbine.
I guess where I get lost in that translation is, is there has to be a window there that both of them meet the SS3?
Oh absolutely. They both meet the requirement for SS3. The gradation requirement is just sieves. They put material in it and they sieve it out. That doesn't have a hardness factor in it.
Essentially, this is kind of, the way I'm looking at this is this is kind of a situation where, like when you purchase the galvanized beams a while back off of, what's that called? Purple Wave? At a reduced price and we're able to put it in stock anticipating that we're going to use it. If we buy this 7,000 tons, we're still obligated to buy the remainder of the material that we've, Roger's been talking about. We're still obligated to that, but we're going to buy this 7,000 tons because it's a savings and we're going to put it in stock.
Correct, and this is up to 7,000 ton. He is of course selling this material elsewhere, and so this would be just according to our needs. So we don't need this material all the time, but I would purchase probably a couple of thousand ton to have it in the yard.
How many tons do we use annually of this SS3? What's our current usage?
You know, probably 3 to 5,000 ton. We didn't use any last year. But we have some in the yard to
Okay, it doesn't say that on this Darren, then how much are you wanting to buy?
You know, I would, I would order at least 2,000 ton to have on hand. I thought the savings was great enough that I should come to the commission and discuss it.
One thing I, I do enjoy hearing, and I'm familiar with some of the quarries down there and the products that come out of that area, and it is a little harder, a little cleaner, and does last a little bit longer. The discouraging thing is why Mr. Knight didn't come forward when you went out for pricing and add this product at that time.
Yeah, I can, I wish he would have too also, but
And it convolutes the reason of doing that. But we're well within our rights to go ahead and purchase this, I assume?
Yeah, like Darren said, the way we issue the purchase orders are for those materials is up to an amount. So, you know, if we don't need it for whatever reason, then we're not obligated to purchase that amount.
And again Darren, you said, how much annually we would use of this SS3?
You know, typically, we use maybe 5,000 ton of it. You know, we order it on demand for certain areas, so at that point, it was under the purchase agreement or purchasing power when we were ordering it, but at these amounts, it gets greater than what I'm authorized to purchase. And then also with the savings, you know, I think the commission needs to understand and be, and realize what we're doing.
So if we're using 1,000 tons a year, and we're buying another two years' worth, that's $58,000 and we're saving $8,000. I guess in the long run, rock is not going to wear out sitting in a pile.
Right, that's correct.
I don't think that this material is going to get cheaper next year or the year after. I guess, I would like to have a designated amount that we're going to authorize. That seems prudent to me, rather than say up to 7,000 tons, because then you're talking, what, 2 for, you're talking about $170,000, which is a pretty good amount of money to sit in a rock pile for several years that we may or may not use. I don't have a problem with your thinking on the 2,000 tons, but I'm throwing that out there as information or thoughts for the commission to think about.
Well, the reason in my mind that we shied away from this product in the past is the cost.
Yes.
And it's a premium type product to have in certain areas of the county. And with our ability to get it at this price, I go back to, like you said, it's not going to wear out piled up somewhere. So take advantage of special pricing and get it while you can. And with that being said, I don't have any problem of putting the 7,000 ton cap on it and you bringing in what is feasible for the county. That's my thought.
Does this have to be done at one time? I mean, do you have to, when you call him back and you say, hey, I'm going to take 1,000 tons, and then July comes along and you say, I think I'll take another 1,000 tons?
That's how that's going to happen, yes. That's how that typically happens with any material. You know, I'll call him and say, hey, we have room, excuse me, we have room, or when can you get the trucks? We're running short on this material.
My thought is to, is to maybe authorize you to buy 2,000 tons. And three, six months down the road, that we're using it at a rate, at a clip greater than you might anticipate, that you come back and ask for further authorization. Does that make sense to anyone else?
Well, my scariest thought there is that if this is going to be on the open market, that some other county goes, okay, hey, this is a good deal and I'm going to take all of it. I mean, so you have that, I would think you would have that chance of losing it, but you always, you always have that, but it's like
Well, that's a risk I'm willing to take. That's me personally.
I don't understand the logistics of that, I guess, going back to Commissioner Vidrickson's comments. We can purchase up to 7,000. So if, but we might only take, we might only purchase three. Does that other four stay in limbo, or could he come back and say, I'm sorry, the 7,000 that you could go up to, I don't have anymore, or would he just get more product in and meet that price quote?
Mr. Knight called me and said he had a pile of 7,000 ton and would like to offer it $29 a ton, but he was going to continue to sell it to others, so it would not be any more than 7,000 ton that we would be able to purchase. That's, I don't know how to
Right, but it might be, he might sell 2,000 ton tomorrow to
Correct.
Somebody, and now we're, he said, I only have five left.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, based on, based on the projection that you've used on how much we use of this a year, I still think that the prudent amount is a couple of thousand tons and take our chances down the road whether someone buys it or doesn't.
Commissioners, I'm going to throw this out and for consideration or thoughts. Basically, we give this guy monies to do his job. He's found a discounted price on material which were no darn good. He's found a discounted price on material which we no darn good will. Is hard to get. It's not reliable on transportation. It's an unknown in the future on cost. We're authorizing him to go up ten, seven thousand dollars or seven thousand tonne on the purchase of this SS3. And we need to allow him that ability to do what he's requesting here, and that's not to exceed seven thousand dollar tonne. And I don't know if it's time for a motion. Maybe I can transpose that into a motion.
Any more?
Mr. Chairman, if I can add something, I like the flexibility of the seven thousand tonnes. We don't have to use it, but giving Darren the opportunity to access that at any time without coming back, just I like the flexibility.
But that having been said, then that means we're going to authorize him to go ahead and purchase the entire seven thousand tonnes. Is that what I'm hearing?
Not to exceed.
Okay, but it's also going to be on the open market for sale. That, that's what I'm trying to.
Undoubtedly, you're going to come back to us in 2023 wanting, needing to purchase road gravel. And this product is going to be on your list. If you could pre-buy 2023's rock, if you only use two or three thousand of this in 2022 and you bought seven thousand, you would take that into account in your 2023 budgeting and we would have that price savings for two years. Is that correct?
Assuming that the, yes. The material will not go to waste. We will, we would order it as we needed it. My plan is to keep probably about two thousand tonne in the yard. And then as we use it, order more as it becomes available. Because that's really all the room we have for. I wouldn't, I wouldn't call Mr. Knight and say, let's order the seven thousand tonne now and deliver it. It would be, because, you know, it takes, i- if we use some of it, it would be replaced. So two to three thousand tonne stockpile in the yard, I believe, is appropriate. Because I don't know what the weather's going to bring.
That's where I'm getting a mixed message. I mean, I've got fellow commissioners wanting to buy the seven thousand tonnes. You say we don't have room to put it. So are we going to buy it and leave it at, at the quarry? Is that, is that what we're proposing? I'm, I'm getting lost here.
That, Mr. Knight.
My understanding is we are not buying all seven thousand tonnes.
The language says not to exceed seven thousand tonne. It gives them that flexibility to go up to the seven if the weather requires or whatever.
Right, but we are also, that having been said, then we are going to run the risk of someone else purchasing that. And, and that's a risk that we're willing to take, I assume, is what you're, what you're saying?
That a question to any of us? I, I, I think we're making this way too difficult.
I agree with that.
If we're able to purchase three thousand, well, we're getting three thousand tonnes at a discounted price. And there's seven thousand that's possibly available, but, but why not go with the recommendations of Roden Bridge? And if he wants to bring two, three thousand into the yard and stockpile it for this year, fine. Towards the end of the year, if he's used a lot of that up and wants to restock and it's still available, he has the capability to go up to seven thousand, so.
With that in the form of a motion. Do we have a couple?
Yeah, is there any, are we done with the commissioners? You have some more remarks? I'll open it up for public comment.
Norman, I'm flying Kansas. Do you guys know what the hell you're doing? Why have any rules, regulation, laws at all? Let's just throw them all out. Give Darren unlimited authority. It's still about taxpayers' money, though.
Any other comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the purchase from Knight Trucking, the SS3 material not to exceed seven thousand tonne.
Second to motion.
All right, it's been moved. And secondly, we approve SS3 purchase agreement 2022-65. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign?
Nay.
Motion carries four, one. Thank you, Darren. I will move on to item number three.
Allocation of Special Alcohol Parks and Rec Funds for 2023. That's 2022-66, Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
Good morning, Commissioners. Each year, the county receives distribution of funds derived from the grocery receipts tax on alcohol. It is by law divided between the general fund and two special revenue funds, a special alcohol fund and a special parks and rec fund. Every other year, the county solicits applications from agencies that qualify to use these funds for their designated purposes. For 2022 and 2023 funds, applications were received in November 21. Five agencies applied for the special alcohol funds and three agencies applied for special parks and rec funding. And on December 28th of 2021, your commission awarded funds for 2022 and recommended the distribution for 2023. The amount that we expect to receive from the special alcohol fund for next year is the same as we received this year. And so the recommendation is that the programs would receive essentially, within a few cents, the same amount that they received this year for the five special alcohol fund recipients. For special parks and recreation fund, however, there was one agency, the ARC of Celine County, that failed to submit their application in a timely manner. And so they were not included in the mix when this was approved in December of last year. But they did go ahead and get their application current. And they're, they submitted for 2023. The amount that we expect to receive from the special parks and rec fund is actually anticipated to be a little bit higher for 23 than what was budgeted for 22. So if we added the ARC into the mix, folks would receive the two, the three, two of the three continuing programs would receive just a few dollars less, a hundred or so dollars less than what they received this year. But that would allow us to fund the city of Gypsum at an increased amount based on their projects that they're anticipating for next year and also to add the ARC into the mix. And so the final dollar amount recommendations then for the special parks and rec fund would be the 4H Council, seven thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars and ninety-six cents, Assyria Youth and the ARC each at two thousand four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents, and the city of Gypsum at three thousand four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty-six cents. So that is staff's recommendation for the special parks and rec fund. And as I said, for the special alcohol fund, recommend just continuing what we did last year. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Questions of the Administrator?
Questions of the Administrator? Questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move we confirm the distribution of monies as adopted on December 28th, 2021.
Second to motion.
It's been moved. Secondly, we approve allocation of special alcohol and park and rec funds for 2023.
Could, could I clarify that before you vote on that motion?
Yes.
Commissioner Sparks?
Yes.
Did you intend to add in the ARC to that?
Yes, because it's.
Yeah, I, I, I would say that we should probably modify the motion to say as recommended by staff, just so we're clear on what we're doing there.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move we confirm the distribution of monies as adopted on December 28th, 2021 as presented by staff.
Second to motion again.
Okay. Just the point being that this is a two-year decision that's made. ARC was late in 2021, but was put back into the pool in 2022 to be eligible for allocation. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody's clear on that?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion in a second to approve allocation of special alcohol, parks and rec funds for 2023. This is 2022-66. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Motion carries five, zero. Move to item number four.
Update and proposed changes for ARPA funding, 2022-67, with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
Morning again. Oh, it's our favorite topic. Seems like every month or so, we're back talking about the American Rescue Plan Act and all, all the things that we want to do with the ten point five million dollars in, in federal funding. So today, staff is recommending a few changes. The first is to approve the second year of funding for the Choose Celine County program. Choose Celine County has been a great asset for our business community. We're getting a lot of money out. However, we, and, and Kolu, our, the app development partner, says that we're actually the best app that they have around the country in terms of the uptake in the community. So that's great. However, we were pretty optimistic with our dollar amounts. And so staff's recommendation is to go ahead and approve the second year of funding, but actually only allocate eighty thousand instead of the hundred and fifty thousand that we've been holding. That should have, be plenty of money for the app for next year and also allow us to reallocate the remaining seventy thousand. The first amount of that, the first thirty-two thousand of that seventy thousand, we recommend reallocating to Celine County Rural Water District number one. They received two grant awards from us as part of the Clean Water Celine County program. The first one was for valve replacement, and then they received a second award for a replacement well. However, when they submitted their, their bids, their bids all came in significantly above their budget. So they have recommended, or they have asked if they can go up to the, the maximum grant award of fifty thousand dollars. So that would be an additional thirty-two thousand six hundred out of that money that's freed up. We also need about seventeen hundred and forty-two dollars to adjust the final total for our intern after he left. We're also seeking to recommend a second year of the COPE Notes program that we did three hundred free subscriptions to county residents and employees last year. We've done a survey on that. People find it really valuable. We would like to get people to pay their own freight on that. But there are a number of folks who said that they could not afford that. So we're seeking to sort of split the cost, have, use some of this ARPA funding to buy down the cost of those subscriptions for our local community and then have a few subscriptions that we would offer for three, for free through partner organizations. Cost of that is twenty-seven thousand dollars. And then we have one award, the commission authorized twenty-five thousand dollars for some employee development projects. One of those came in seventeen hundred and thirty-one dollars under budget. And so recommending that, that amount plus the amount that's left over from the reductions that Choose Celine County project be added to the future program for aircraft industry support. We think we need about four hundred thousand dollars for what's going to be proposed to us on that. This change would bring the total available up to three forty-five and change. So those are the recommended changes for this month. And I'd be happy to answer any questions from commissioners about any of that.
Questions of the Administrator? Questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for possible action.
Mr. Chair, I move we award the changes as presented. Second to motion.
It's been moved. And secondly, we approve update and proposed changes for ARPA funding, 2022-67. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Motion carries five, zero. All right, Tammy, we'll move into our informational items.
Public Building Commission, 2022-68, with Hannah Bet, Deputy County Administrator.
Morning, Hannah.
Good morning, Commission. This is an update on the East Celine County Public Building Commission. We are nearing towards the end of the construction of the emergency radio communication system. So felt it was appropriate to kind of update you on the other piece of this that really made this project happen. And that was the creation of the Celine County Public, Public Building Commission, which was done on September 29th of 2020. This was done to help with the facilitation of acquiring property and for the construction of the radio towers for the emergency public communication system and the issuance of bonds to pay the project, pay for the project. The Celine County Public Building Commission, it's comprised of five members. If you remember, each of the commissioners was tasked with appointing a member to that Public Building Commission. And that member has the same, or has a term that coincides with the Urals appointments. So we do have the upcoming leave of Commissioner White here in the next couple of weeks. So we will have to have another appointment to the Public Building Commission, come here and, and close in the few, in the next few weeks. And the Public Building Commission meets annually, and they meet annually on the third Monday of, of January each year. Obviously, the chairman of the Public Building Commission can also call up a special meeting if so warranted. We had quite a few of those meetings throughout 2021. But now that the bonds have been issued and the project has really kicked off, the bylaws for the Public Building Commission just requires for an annual meeting. On the 12th of January of 2021, the lease was finalized between the county and the Public Building Commission for the property acquired and the agreement that the county would be responsible for lease payments that actually go towards the, the bond payments. Also, on that same day, the Public Building Commission acquired six million, six hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventy-five cents with the sale of general obligation bonds to pay for this project. The final maturity date for these bonds is set for September 1st of 2035 at a one point one one nine percent interest rates. The lease payments for 2021 and 2022 have all been paid. And lease payments remaining are going to be budgeted for about four hundred, plus or minus four hundred and eighty thousand dollars each year until the maturity date of those bonds. As I stated earlier, the public, the emergency radio communications project is nearly complete. We are awaiting final reviews of all associated documents. Some minor equipment stuff, we kind of ran into some supply chain issues, especially with the 911 dispatch center. kind of ran into some supply chain issues, especially with the 911 dispatch center, and that we're waiting for some pieces of equipment to come in. And but once the final acceptance is complete, the final payment of just a little more than 1.3 million will be made to Motorola for the project. But the project itself has actually come in under budget, leaving about $30,000 left in credit with Motorola for use by the county. And we are looking into some equipment that is related to cellular devices as a potential option to actually use up some of that credit. Just as kind of a note, we do have the county commission that is set to meet in a study session on the 21st of February in '23, specifically for the discussion of county property and county buildings. We anticipate that to be a fairly large discussion because there's a lot that's kind of coming, coming down over the last couple of years. But this is, it just serves as a really good reminder that the creation of the Public Building Commission just offers the county commission just another, the county commission and the county, another vehicle to kind of explore options as it relates to county property too in the future. So with that, I'm certainly open to any questions that you have, but this isn't something that comes up very often, so it's a nice little reminder to know we have this resource.
Questions of the deputy administrator?
I have a comment, if I may. I was extremely skeptical when Celine County looked at PBC because basically it was some new funding mechanism and thanks to our administrator that brought it to our attention. It's been a useful tool. It got the, the communication project going off board and finally, after long enduring time, we're almost complete there. And yes, there are other projects coming up in the future, which I will not be a part of, but it's a useful tool and hopefully it'll continue and thrive and we've got some awesome members on that board that helps steer and direct and it's a good deal. I possibly move for Celine County.
Any good, any other comment? Thank you, Hannah, for that report. We'll go to item number two.
Commissioners' comments?
Comments from the commissioner?
I'd like to relay information that I, I did attend the Airport Authority meeting last Wednesday and I'll share with you a couple, three of the highlights that are forthcoming. Things are really on the upswing out there again, getting past COVID. SkyWest and United Airlines are in the process and the Airport Authority are trying to put together a schedule that would count for seven weekly flights to Chicago, seven weekly flights to Denver and four weekly flights to Houston. And they seem to be pretty optimistic that all of these were going to get approved by the FAA and, and so on. One of the big news that's coming out that's going to really enhance things at Salina, Manhattan Airport will be shutting down for 112 days this summer, you know, to reconstruct a runway. So that, hopefully, they're anticipating a lot of action coming from Manhattan that people will be flying out of Salina instead of Manhattan. So that's a real positive. The other highlight of their meeting for me anyway was that the, the Airport Authority has 1,064 acres, I think it is, that they lease out to farmers and they did approve all of those, reaprove the people that were farming those acres and that's about the size of it.
Question, Commissioner, do they put that out for bid, that land? Do you know?
The answer is they, they re-upped with all of the people that have been leasing for probably 20 to 25 years. They do not put it out for bid, is my understanding. They do assign all of the acreage, has a set price, it, that has a lot of stipulations on what they can plant out there. They don't want row crops, as an example, that attract deer and birds and so on and so forth. And most of the acreage out there was at 50,000, $57 per acre rental.
Thank you. Any other commissioner comments? Seeing none, we'll go to item number three.
Announcements?
Any announcements?
Just announce that due to the fact that New Year's Day falls on a Sunday this year, the city-county building will be closed next Monday, January 2nd. We'll be back in here on Tuesday.
Thank you. All right, I guess that would conclude our meeting. I entertain a motion for adjournment.
Salute.
I'll second it for the last time in 2022.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, we adjourn this meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Thank you.